I would like to call to order the Joint Public Works and Public Safety Commission's meeting of October 6th, 2022. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. Again, malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on a particular item or items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. Please make sure you visit malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The recording secretary, Randy, will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Commissioners, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. All right.
You ready?
Roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Merrick.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Drummond. Vice Chair Dietrich.
Here.
Commissioner Major.
Here.
Commissioner Spiegel.
Here.
Commissioner Gibbs. Commissioner Inbeet. Mr. Woodworth. Vice Chair Stewart.
Present.
Chair Frost.
Present.
You have a call.
All right. Beat us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Well, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation under God. Justice, reprieve, justice for all.
All right. Approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, Doug Stewart.
I'm not sure. What agenda are we approving?
The agenda that we have in front of us for today.
Okay, all right, just making sure. All right. So yes, do I have a motion to approve the agenda then?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Perfect. Roll call.
Commissioner Merrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Spiegel.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Chair Major.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dietrich.
Yes.
Chair Frost.
Yes.
Your motion passes.
Could we have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
It was properly posted September 30th, 2022.
All right. And that takes us to our only item, which is new business, 1A Caltrans Capital Improvement Projects Update. Staff.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, I am happy to have a presentation by our friends at Caltrans on their projects that they're proposing to do on PCH. And I'm trying to get my screen right here a little bit. Bear with me. But before we get going, I just want to point out that we're under a little bit of a time restriction. We have to end this meeting by 5:45. There's another meeting that kind of directly after this one that staff who's running the meeting needs to kind of make sure that they get everything going and get that meeting going too. So I think with this, with our presentation and the questions, I think we can get through everything. But if it happens to be, we don't actually get through everything, feel free to reach out to me and our Caltrans reps, and they'll be able to help out. So today, we have Greg Farr and Robert Effinger from Caltrans. They are part of Caltrans Project Management Team, who is responsible for doing the project management, to actually do design and get these projects out. They do not have, I just wanted to point out too, is they do not have the responsibility of doing maintenance. That's a different crew. So if there's questions about maintenance, that's a totally separate crew that handles it. These gentlemen are strictly doing all of the capital projects or all their projects that are within Caltrans right away in our section. So with that, I think I'll hand it over to Greg. Greg, are you doing this or is it Robert doing it?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm doing the presentation, Rob. Thank you. I am, my name is Gregory Farr. I'm the Acting Deputy District Director for Program Project Management in Caltrans District 7. I have one of my assistants, Deputy Directors with me, Rob Effinger, also. And we'll both be available for Q and A after the presentation. So next slide. Okay, so the, what you see on all of these projects, you'll see some basic information on them. The purple is the limits or the length of the projects, and they do extend beyond, in this case, beyond, you know, the city of Malibu. But if you don't see the purple line, then it'll probably be just a spot location. And you'll see the little flag, and in this case, the EA is on that little flag you probably can't see. And this project is to install feedback signs along the corridor that you see in front of you. It's a minor project. The feedback signs are those signs that, you know, when you come around the bend or something, you see the sign with the miles per hour that says you how fast you're going. So it'll be improvements along this corridor to hopefully slow traffic down as people are going through. So no camera, or there's no, it's not hooked up to any kind of, you know, thing to get a ticket or anything. So and the construction is slated to start in fall of 2024. So next slide, please. So the next project is a, what we call a cap-in project. It's a coal plant and overlay of the pavement where you see it is from, it's in the cities of Santa Monica, Los Angeles, and Malibu. It's from Colorado Avenue to south of Cross Creek Road in Malibu. It's a total of 57 lane miles of pavement. There are 16 culverts that were repaired, 14 liners, a couple head walls on some of the drainage out there. And it is over 780 or 7,800 feet of guard rail. There's 19 curb ramps that'll get upgraded, a couple census stations, and five and a half miles of fiber optic. There's also 17 enhanced visibility crosswalks. And there's 30 concrete bus pads that will be installed along that corridor on the project. And the current phase is in, it's currently an environmental phase. Next slide, please. 3130. Okay, I think we might have been out, I think my staff might have been out here earlier in the week on this particular project. This is a drainage repair project. It's a covert, 12 culverts are getting rehabbed. And the major project and cost driver on this project is the bridge at Solstice Creek is being, or that, not the bridge, but the culvert at Solstice Creek is being replaced with the bridge to allow for fist passage on that particular creek. So we're hoping we should be in construction probably early summer of next year. And it's slated to last for a couple years and, you know, and that's primarily driven by the new bridge at Solstice Creek. So and this is currently wrapping up the design phase. Well, I think we, well, we've actually finished the design. There's still some right-of-way issues outstanding that we're working through. Okay, next slide, please. All right, this is Topanga Lagoon Bridge Replacement Project and Lagoon Restoration. This is an oversight project that's currently in environmental. And well, it may even be pre-environmental. The project is not funded. It's, we're looking at potentially $46 million, but it's not funded at this point. There is partial funding for us to study the bridge or to work on the environmental on this particular location. It's actually a project from the Resource Conference, Convert, Con, Conservation District of Santa Monica Mountains. And it's in collaboration with California Department of Parks and Recreation. So it is to replace the bridge. I'm not sure if the bridge is actually in Malibu, but there will certainly be effects in Malibu. I know it says the construction start is winter of 2025. I would say that's highly optimistic and highly unlikely to happen. So I'm planning on retiring in five years, and I don't think it'll be out there in construction in my time at Caltrans. So the, next slide, please. All right, the next project is what we're calling a proactive long-lead safety project. And it's really just a shop candidate project for the 2026 shop at this point. We haven't even started the program or project initiation document at this time. What we're, it would potentially be a bridge rail replacement at Las Flores Creek. And it's a project that we're looking for on the state side to partner with the city of Malibu for future improvements at Las Flores intersection. Or right, you know, right where the creek is there. So it's an early candidate project. And that's why you don't see any, well, it's not funded for anything at this point. So except for the coming up with the document to potentially program a project. But again, it's something I think that you guys have expressed interest in. And so we're looking to partner with whatever improvements that you guys are looking to do at that intersection in conjunction with this project as we move forward. So next slide, please. The next project is a permanent slope restoration project near Big Rock Drive. It's in, it's just south of Big Rock Drive. We had an emergency project a while back to what kind of, they constructed a shotcrete wall, and what we're coming in with this project is a say, a permanent retaining wall, and it'll be a soldier pile wall at this location. We should be in, we're currently in design phase for this. And we should be in construction in early or spring or early summer of 2024 on this project. Okay, next slide, please. So the, okay. This is a project to install a protected left turn on PCH at Lost Floris Canyon Road and upgrade the signal there. It also includes speed feedback sign and upgrading. There's an existing flashing beacon, beacon that's out there at this location. The bids that were opened on this project on 9/27 last week, last week. And we should be at construction. I guess probably early, early fall, within a couple of months, we should be in construction on this particular project location. All right, next slide, please. This project is, it's another minor project. It's to replace an existing flashing yellow beacon with a pedestrian signal at an existing crosswalk that is out there. If you can see the little, or the green icon where you see it, that's about the location of where it's at. I didn't have any cross streets of where it's at, but there's an existing crosswalk if you know the location. And whoops. So the, and we're hoping to be out in construction at some time next, summer of next year. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, this is a highway maintenance project that's currently in construction. It was to, it went from Malibu Lagoon Bridge to Solstice Creek Canyon. And it was basically to remove and replace distressed pavement at individual locations along that route. And then it was also a slurry seal for the pavement surface. Unfortunately, this is a project where the contractor went bankrupt recently, and we're working with the bonding company to get a new contractor out there. We've had a number of discussions. I'm hoping that we can let, you know, Rob know soon what the schedule will be to fix the rest of this project. But we do intend to go out there and complete the project as soon as we can get a contractor on board. I know that the bonding company is taking bids currently from contractors to finish this. Okay, next slide, please. All right. This project is a major rehab project on on PCH. Well, everything is on PCH. And it's from north of Sierra Road to the Ventura County Line. It's going to resurface 64, three lane miles, coal plant and overlay, as well as shoulders and the main line. Replacement of damaged concrete slabs, as well as with new jointed plain concrete slabs. And there will be complete streets elements added to the project. We have, what was it? Currently, there's 36 accessible pedestrian signals. Those are the, the APS is on the little poles there. And then we've got, what was it? 24 curb ramps and over 1,200 feet of guard rail that gets replaced on this particular project. I also, this is the project where I think we've made a presentation. Was it June maybe or July early on? Where we were looking at potentially adding bike lanes to this facilities. We have, we are, you know, we're currently in design and we're working with the city staff to see what the potential of, if there's bike lanes out there. I think our messaging was probably poor at that meeting when we went out there. So we will, we probably will be coming back in the future on this particular project individually, if there's potential to add class-two bike paths along this corridor within the limits that you see on the screen there. So I apologize for the, for, if there's any mixed messaging on that particular project. We certainly don't want to install something that's not potentially wanted by the community or everything. And I have yet to find anyone that likes removing parking. So we are going to look at seeing what we can do without any impacts to the parking. And if there is any impacts to the parking, we will certainly be working in conjunction with the city before we come back to you guys if we're going to propose anything like that. So, okay, next slide. So the, oh, this is the Clean California Project that is painting a mural along the walking path on the undercrossing at where is it? The what's the bridge? I don't want to give you just a post-mile.
It's corral.
Corral, okay, thanks. So we're wrapping up the design of this project. It should be going out to construction fairly soon. I, well, it'll be advertised later this year, and you're probably looking early sometime next year for construction of that particular project. Okay, the next slide, please. So, oh, this is everyone's favorite. This is the Trancas Creek Bridge Replacement Project. It's currently in construction. It's, we're replacing the existing bridge. And we're also, it's, we're replacing the 90-year-old bridge. And we're increasing the lane widths to standard lane widths and shoulders along that bridge. And there's a 14-foot wide shoulder on the southbound side, which can be used for future pedestrian and bicycling use. I don't believe that all the details of what that potentially might look at will be during this project, but I'm sure we'll be having discussions probably in the future after this is, when construction is nearing completion. We are almost done with the rainy season. I think it goes to the end of the month. So it may not look like anything's happening over the next, from November until, you know, early next spring, where we can get back out there. And at least in the creek bed if needed. So I think that's the last project that we have on this that are the Caltrans-led projects. Are there any questions for Rob or I?
A couple of things that I kind of wanted to point out on the slides to both Greg, Rob, and I have been working real close on a lot of things. And it's been a great working relationship on coordinating stuff. And we've been really kind of working closely to kind of making sure we're not overlapping and doing things. A clear example is that is on Lost Floris. We've been talking and communicating, and Caltrans knows that we're interested on doing some improvements at the intersection. They have a project that they've identified, and we're going to work together to try to see how we can combine them and, you know, collaborate and try to work on things. You know, another thing that, you know, Greg mentioned, but I also wanted to kind of point out too, is the bike lanes that previous, previous meeting that Caltrans had, when they mentioned that they were going to remove parking and doing that. Well, since then, Greg, Rob and I have been meeting, talking about different ideas and different things we can do within that section of PCH from Webway all the way to County Line. What type of bike improvements in that area? Who's using that area? What existing no parking? Where are the bad areas? And that's been going really, really well. It looks like, you know, we have a really good kind of idea on how we can improve that area. And I'm kind of looking forward and kind of working with them to get that. So so, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's been, it's been great working with these guys. I look forward to working with these guys in the future on kind of collaborating and working on things. And if there's questions about our projects and their projects, I'll be happy to answer it. But I guess we can go.
Let's start, let's start with, I'm just going to go in order as I see them. Let's start with Doug. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Nice presentation, Caltrans. Appreciate that very much. One thing on the speed feedback signs, I just want to check, I've gotten feedback from people living on PCH that the feedback signs are often used by racers to document how fast they're going. Do you have a cap on what that reads out? Because when they see 95 or 100 miles an hour, they've got somebody taking a picture of that.
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if it'll read past 99 miles per hour. But I will take that back, and I'll let Rob know if there is an indication.
Yeah, I think it's not just the 99 miles an hour. There should be a cap on it because these guys are in a 45 mile an hour zone. And the straightaways are using these as their documentation to their buddies. So cap it off and say 75 or 65 miles an hour or something would be better.
So, yeah, I was going to mention Travis, Travis knows about these speed rate, speed feedback signs. And depending on which ones they actually put out there can be quite a lot of flexibility. And I don't want to, I don't want to steal Travis's thunder, but I think Travis can talk a little bit about different ones that we have.
Yeah, definitely, Commissioners. Yeah, so a lot of the speed feedback signs, there is a dark mode that they can go into. For instance, a lot of the ones that are on the city streets, they are set to be approximately 20 miles per hour above the speed limit. So it still tracks the data, but it does not present it to the person for that reason, for the speeding and taking the picture, you know, being able to see the high number. So that is an option that can be easily input when they're configuring the boxes.
That's good. Thank you very much. That's good. Thank you very much. And I'm a second question. On the bicycle lanes with the pavement restoration, I'm assuming there's no bicycle lanes going and are up for discussion on any of the other sites as well. Is that correct?
Like which ones?
Well, I know he was talking about the ones, now I can't find my note here, but we have pavement preservation and rehabilitation, which really. Will entail probably restriping the streets. I'm assuming we're not going to be putting bike lanes in from that restriping process, right? Crickets. There's nothing but crickets.
So.
So. I muted myself. I'm sorry. Instead of unmuting, I muted myself. There are no bike lanes planned on any of the particular projects at this point. If there's existing striping out there for bikes. That would get replaced if it gets, you know, removed for any of the pavement work that we're doing. So, and, and other than the one project that we want to work with the city to figure out if we can add. Addition or any kind of striping for bike lanes in that project.
Thank you very much. That's all I wanted to find out.
Scott just walked away for a second. So Brian, and let's go to you and then we'll grab Scott when he comes back.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Major. I've got, I got four questions. When we're talking about the, like, the first one that you showed, which was the cold plane bus ramps and etcetera, a lot of different things under that. As well as the Solstice Creek. Really, it has to do with any of these projects that I saw when the traffic impact as far as. Are you taking away lanes to do these projects? And if you are, what consideration goes into the timing of it like? You know, do we do it after summer? Do we do it at night? Do we do it during the day? Because some of these areas. That the traffic is already pretty bad. And if we're taking away lanes, it's going to back up for a long, long ways and people are not going to be happy. So that's one question. You want me to tell you all my questions?
I can answer them one at a time if you want. I think you're probably referring to the first project. Or I think it was the second project, actually, the second slide or project slide, but. That project is the coal plant and overlay with digouts as needed type of thing. The, any, if we need to take lane closures to do it, it's, it would almost assuredly be. Done at night. The problem with the type of coal plant and overlay project is. At the time between you, after, from coal planning to actually doing the overlay. Because it, the, the rough section below it is still left there. That's the bigger issue. The closures to do it would almost assuredly be at the night because there's probably. Well, I doubt there's any daytime unless you're, I don't know what the traffic is like on there, but. We typically do not do the, the closures. We wouldn't do closures if it would back up traffic. Too much during the daytime. So almost everything we do in, in Los Angeles and Ventura is at night.
Okay, thanks for that.
Brian, real quick, Brian, real quick, for the. Solstice Creek or Corral, yeah, we made sure the design included that they're not going to take, it's still going to have four lanes. Going through in there, so it's, they're going to do that section in three sections and so they'll. Maintain, make sure we still have all the traffic lanes to go through in there.
Okay, good. I mean, you know, that particular area, there's no way around it. You know, there's no side street. There's not. And you get around it. So it's a pretty kind of a choke point. My other question is. The, I thought that I saw something where we're going to be installing another stoplight along Carbon Beach where there's a crosswalk. Is that correct? Like there's an existing crosswalk there, but we're, we're putting the stoplight in now for that.
So.
There's an existing, there's an existing flashing beacon there. And we're replacing it with a pedestrian signal crossing.
So, so it will be, it'll turn red and stop traffic whenever someone pushes the button.
It would turn red and stop traffic, yes.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Well, I mean, that's already a pretty congested area and there's crosswalks in a lot of places there, but. Okay, that I just wanted to be clear on that, that we were getting another stoplight.
If I'm allowed to share, I can probably show, I can show you the location.
Well, I think I know where the location is along Carbon Beach. It looked like.
So Brian, real quick on that one, too. It's that signal will be connected to our P C A signal sync project and. That will, the synchronization of all the signals. Will really kind of impact on when that signal could be turned over by pedestrians and so pedestrians pushing the button, doing that. It's not going to stop traffic.
Yeah, I mean, I just, people are sensitive after that one that happened down by the pier where, you know, it's two hundred feet between crosswalks with two signals and. You know, I don't know. That's part of it. And then my last question, which I think I know the answer to, and you did answer it after I wrote down my question, but. The Tranquus Bridge isn't going to be completed until twenty twenty seven. Is that because you have to stop everything during the winter?
We can't work within the riverbed for the, from. November through, I forget. I want to say through February, I want to say it is probably for five months.
Okay, I mean, I did, that just struck me as being five year project. That was longer than I had thought it would take, but.
It's, it's taken longer than we initially hoped to.
Well, thank you for answering my questions.
Scott, you're next and then Josh when you're done.
Okay, thanks, Wade. And thank you, Greg, for the presentation. In terms of the flashing speed signs. How many new, this is in slide one, how many new flashing signs are you proposing?
You know, I don't have the. Total number, but it's. It wouldn't be more than one in each direction.
So only two signs in that. Whole length.
Well, no, no, never. I'm sorry. I don't know the total number. I'm going to have to. Get back to you on what the plan is on that particular one.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Because in general, I'm opposed to those. I don't think it slows anybody down. That either traffic's going too slow because it's congested. Or people are blowing by them anyways. Could you put up slide two, please? Thank you. That was fast. Okay, this is for the signs. I just don't want to see lots of signs up that I don't think will do any good at all. And all it does is congest the area with signs, so I think I would want to oppose that. Would you go to slide three, please? The next one. Okay, so. The ADA curb ramps and upgrade guard rail. Would you explain this in a little bit more detail? I don't, I don't think I quite understood exactly what the purpose of this was.
Okay, so there is. The, there's a number of locations of guardrail that are particularly protecting. It probably ends up bridges that when you cross bridges, you see the guardrail leading up into. If there's overhead signs, that type of thing. There's a total of, the total length is. On that project is seven hundred or seventy eight hundred and sixty linear feet of guardrail.
And. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I want to say your typical installation. Is. Want to say a hundred and fifty feet? Probably more, yeah, or so, but again, so that's what you're typically looking out there. There may also be guardrail along. On the ocean side, along, you know, along the edge of, you know, where the dike is there.
Okay. It says install American with Disability Act curb ramps. What is, what are those?
You have curb ramps at the corner intersections. So a lot of the curb ramps that we have out there don't meet the current standards. So in a lot of cases, it could just be adding the, the, the yellow dot, you know, the yellow mats to them there. If they're missing those, could be fixing, a lot of times it's fixing the slope. And getting a slope that meets the ADA requirements.
Okay, great. You know, one thing you might consider looking at is. Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy took down a fence at Las Tunas Beach. And there is no guardrail there and a number of people have discussed and Rob can give you more details. But having a guardrail or something, you know, so that people don't get crashed into. Would you go to the next slide, please?
Scott, that was La Costa Beach.
You're right. It's La Costa. Thank you, Chris.
And Scott, that was already looked at by Caltrans. I had their traffic. Operations sections look to see if, if a guardrail could be put there and they made a determination that that site. Was not recommended for a guardrail.
Ooh, how come? Do you know?
It's, they have their standards and certain criteria to put guardrail up and apparently that didn't meet it.
Wow. It's a matter of time till a car goes over that.
Plus there's, plus there's right away issues too that they were mentioning.
I bet there are. Okay, so pipe and cover repair, open the fish pack. Right. You know, one of the things overall that I saw in these, it seems like there's a lot of different projects, seven or eight, whatever the number. Are you going to be trying to coordinate? So that we don't get sequential traffic delays?
Yeah.
Greg?
So, yeah, that's, that's one of the things that it's, it's very important that both Greg, Rob and I are. Actually, Troy, too, we work really closely to kind of. Try to schedule and try to look at, see if we're not going top of each other, if who's doing what and kind of stuff. And so. We've, we've made a big effort to try to make sure we're still continuing, communicating to make sure that's not, it doesn't happen. That we don't have projects overlapping. There's not one on the other or one doesn't do it. So it's. Something that we're, we've taken great effort to try to make sure we're not.
Excellent. Thank you. Could I see the next slide, please? Okay, DePanga Bridge, what's the purpose of replacing it? Is it just old and unsafe?
No, it's not an issue of bridge health. It's. It's an issue to restore, restore the lagoon. So I think it narrows at that location also. So they want to lengthen the bridge. And restore the lagoon to, I guess, a size bigger than when the highway came through. So. And that's what I'm saying. It's so far that it's being funded by other sources and what Caltrans. Can fund it. So we're just looking at preliminary environmental. At this right now. And that's why I was saying it, there's no way winter of twenty twenty five is close to reality.
Right.
That's just, that prints out because that's what the schedule in our, in our, you know, database is.
Right. And, and I'll leave it at that with one last comment that. You know, we, especially in central and eastern Malibu, we just can't afford to lose any parking at all. We have a huge problem with parking and of course coastal is. Very much looking over our shoulder about parking, so. Anything we have to do has to take that in mind, but appreciate all your information. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. I haven't found. A business or even homeowners or anybody that wants their parking removed that's on the street.
Yeah.
All right, Josh.
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the Tranquus Creek Project. You said that you'd be leaving work in the rainy season. Does that mean you're going to be taking all construction materials, equipment? The job trailer out of there. During that time period and then returning it when you will begin work?
No, there will be no work in the, the riverbed area. There, if there's work that can be done from, you know, up top or whatever. That'll still continue if it's outside of the riverbed, that work will still continue to.
About, about three years ago after Woolsey, that, that location where the job trailer is that, that was flooded. I mean, and the entire actual. What are we calling that? Just above the berm, that was all flooded as well. I suggest, I highly suggest you take steps to mitigate any, any large flood damage to your equipment. And then also to our environment. I'd hate for a lot of that equipment to end up in the, on the beach. Also, the, the homeowners up there just above the project are probably going to be pretty pissed off. You leave it for six months. Is there, is there no way to take a lot of that equipment? Stay, if you can't take it all out of there, just at least make it neat, make it nice.
So. Let me just kind of step in a little bit, too. Let me just kind of. Part of the work is actually going into the riverbed and putting those piles and casings and everything else. That's. That's what they're stopping to do within there. And so Caltrans. They've, you know, we've been working real close on with their construction crew out there, kind of. Making sure, getting updates and kind of seeing what their progress is. And one of the things is. They really worked really hard trying to get those piles and foundations that were, that are inside of the riverbed done. And once they're done with that, they can come up and start building the false work and everything else for the bridge. And so, yeah, they're still going to be working, just not going to be working within. The. You know, the, you know, the creek bed area, they're going to be up above kind of doing, making sure they're. They're doing that work. And so if they're done with the flat work, the idea is that. That will be ready to go after the, after the winter months and they can still do more piles for the other piles that they have to do in there. So it's a kind of like. The trade off. And so they're going to be flip flopping kind of their work pattern.
Sure. So what you're saying is that there'll be, there'll be bodies on site.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's plenty of work, okay, throughout, all right.
And it's a good point about that flood over there. Yeah, we'll talk to their construction crew and kind of make them aware of that and kind of see what they can do to kind of. Watch that. I mean, I mean, obviously, you know, we get really good data on storm events and stuff, too, and. You know, I share that information to our partners and making sure that they don't get flooded or damaged, but yeah.
Yeah, it's a serious canyon.
Yep, it is.
Real, yeah. And then the other thing, I don't know if you've been in touch with Merrill May. He's had some, some pretty heavy issues with just the overall general safety of, of. What's happening over there. The bike lane is, is kind of a disaster. Says to, you know, get off your bike, walk your bike, but nobody's doing that. You can't even see the signs, really. So I'm sure you've been in touch with Merrill May. I just want to make sure that people are listening. He knows his stuff and he cares a lot.
Yeah, we got it. Yeah, we're working, yeah, we work closely with them. Merrill works closely with their maintenance crews and kind of, he kind of really sends a message to, we both kind of hit him on both sides. He does it, we do it, kind of, it's the combination.
Appreciate it, Rob. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Scott, you had another comment?
I did. Thank you, Wade. Greg, Doug had brought up at the beginning about that crosswalk, walk changing from flashing yellow. About that crosswalk, walk changing from flashing yellow to. So that'd be the same kind of signal that we have right now on PCH, uh, by the Palisades uh. What is it? RV park, not RV, but mobile home park, Palisade Bowl and those kind of things.
I don't know if it'll be the same type.
I, I, I think if it's gonna be, we're gonna request it to be like a full pedestrian signal rather than a hybrid.
Yeah, because the one, the one there, you know, it, it goes from red, then it flashes red. But people don't, in California, don't understand what that means. So they all spit and people honk on their horns. It's, it's a mess. Um, so I hope we can do something a lot later from that. That's it.
All right, I, I got, I got a few of my own if there's nobody else in, in the waiting. So um. Uh, real quickly, I, I, I know it's outside the city limits, but the um, Topanga Bridge and Lagoon project. I mean, that's been talked about for, what is it, fifteen years ever since the uh. The, the county bought all of the old Hollywood Athletic Club property there. And I, you know, that. I think even twenty twenty-five is beyond optimistic. That is an engineering nightmare. And that's going to be an absolutely hellacious project to do and not bottleneck traffic in the process. So I mean, it's outside cities purview, but I, I just think that's, I know everybody wants to do it, but it just sounds like. A, a real nightmare waiting to happen. Um, I would also reiterate a lot of what I think some of the others have said. That you, you know, the, the big issue in Malibu is traffic. And especially in the summer and especially if there are emergencies, like if, you know, God forbid, there's another fire. And we have another whole city evacuation. Um, we can't afford to have lanes blocked off at, at key. The points in the city. So um, I would say please work with our public works people. And to make sure that everything is on a schedule and done in such a way, they know where all the hotspots are. You know, they know, they know where the traffic bottles up and when it does and when, where it does. And you know, if you can work out a perfect schedule or as close to a perfect schedule as possible, so that. Um, the city isn't just disastrously impacted by like three or four bottlenecks suddenly at one time. And we have just this horrible summer where people can't get out and can't get to the canyons. You know, any, anything that schedules everything in a really sensible way is appreciated. Um. I'm not, I'm also, I want to reiterate what Doug and Scott said. I'm not a fan of the, the speed signs. I think it contributes to speed pollution. I don't think they do much good. I think they do some limited good on residential streets and in some of the canyon areas. We've got one here in, in Big Rock. It, you know, it slows some people down some of the time, which is helpful. I don't know that it slows all the people down all the time. And on PCH, I think um, people just disregard it. Because they think it's PCH, I'm gonna go as fast as the car is going in front of me. And um, you, you know, that, I, I don't, I think fewer, as few as possible. Maybe at only crucial places where you think that they will actually have an impact, but otherwise, I just, I just. I don't see that people uh pay much attention to them. I'd reiterate what Josh said about leaving equipment for too long. Those pipes that were left down at Tranqus for a long time. I don't even know if they're still there, but I know that really annoyed a lot of people. So if, if equipment is not going to be used or installed i- in an expeditious manner. I'd, I'd say please try to find a way to relocate it just as a courtesy to the people who live there. Um, the uh Tranqus Bridge, i- if you could give me a sense, when is that going to start? If it's gonna take until twenty twenty-seven?
Tranqus Bridge has already started.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that technically has already, that's, that's begun now. It's gonna take between now, it's good, that's a five year project?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's because of their, the, the, the uh, the limited work they can do with outside of the stream. You know, with, within the stream bed, they can only do it during that part of the year and um. And, and putting those piles i- is like a very important part of doing a bridge. That's the first part you gotta do first is. Put the foundation in.
Okay.
That takes time and effort and you kind of do that and, and so.
No, I, I, I get that. I mean, my, my concern there is that that thing, you know, I took a look at that, what, two years ago or so? Uh, and it just, it was, I mean, it's in bad shape and we all know that. And I'm, I'm just concerned, you know, that. Is, is this scheduling? I mean, are you comfortable that the way that this is scheduled? That you won't be surprised by any, any events, any deterioration during the interim?
With the bridge, I would say yes. I mean, if there, if something does happen um, to the existing facility. We would fix it uh, under emergency director's order if it needed to be. Because part of it isn't just a delay because of the, the restrictions in the riverbed. The, you know, um, it's also due to making sure that we have the, the, the traffic lanes open at all times. Except for the temporary closures. So there's a lot of staging of the, of getting the traffic through there. Um, that also takes place. So making sure that we're, you, you know, uh, it's, it's two lanes each direction out there, right? So you're, we're, other than the, the temporary closures typically overnight or something. Um, that, that facility will be four lanes during the duration. So that also plays into how long it's taking.
Okay, I mean, I, I, that's, that's great. It's just my concern, when you said twenty twenty-seven, I thought, wow, this is. There's just so much that could go wrong with that bridge in five years. It just, it, it, you know, there are parts of it that could fall apart tomorrow. And it, that, that's just, you know, for, over five years, I, I think that's, I mean, I understand why it has to be. I'm just saying, you know, you, you should be ready for the possibility that some, you know, a piece of concrete will just collapse in the meantime. If, if you're not monitoring every step of the way.
Yeah. So here's some good news on that.
Yeah.
There's a contractor there already. Just, so, so if something happened, it's, they're right there. They can, they can fix it.
Yeah, and that's.
All right, fantastic. Uh, and then um, two more issues really quickly. The um, the mural, the corral mural, where is that gonna go again exactly?
Underneath the.
So it, it's, it's the, the corral under crossing i- is, i- is being replaced. Uh, they have to um. Um, it's, they have to remove the bottom of, of it. They, they had some order to actually make that fish accessible. And whatnot. And so it's gonna be an open bottom section, but they're also gonna be a pedestrian access that goes along with that too. Um, that went to planning commission, I think it was, what Troy uh, last week? Last week, and, oh, oh. Monday, yeah, yeah, went Monday for approval. And so um, a- as part of that pedestrian under crossing, this. This clean California kind of mur- mural that um. Uh, Caltrans is, is actually actively working with our arts commission to kind of uh, nice mural that's gonna go inside of that walkway.
Got it. So, so I mean, it will be seen, it will be visible may, only to people who use the walkway, in other words. Yeah, I mean, um, my only concern, and I am all for murals, and my only concern is that uh. Half of my favorite murals around Los Angeles lasted about five, six years before somebody tagged them and they. And destroyed them and they wound up having to repaint them. Do we, I mean, that, i- if it's a mural that's in an underpass. That's like a magnet for taggers, especially mischief makers from out of town to come in. And as soon as it's done, just say, let's go mess it up. And it, do, have we considered how to sort of address that and potent? I mean, that's a, you know, a, a point two eight million dollars, three hundred thousand or whatever that winds up being two fifty, that two hundred and eighty thousand. That, that's a, that's a fair amount of money for a mural and if it's just gonna get graffitied within, you know. A minute or two after it's done.
Right. So from what I know, that they are um, putting anti-graffiti coating on it and, and they're working with the arts commission. To kind of figure out a way they can kind of prevent that. I mean, can you prevent it one hundred percent? Probably not. But you can do measures to kind of make sure that um, the cleanup and following maintenance of that is, i- is a little bit easier.
Good. All right. Well, the arts, the arts people are awesome. Lottie, Lottie knows what she's doing. Uh, and then my last thought is um, it's, it's, it's great to mitigate the traffic, to do the work at night. But at the same time, mountain has a dark skies ordinance. And uh, when you do work at night, there's light pollution and there's noise pollution. And for the people who live adjacent to that, especially the people who live on PCH, that's a, that's a potential disruption. So is there, are there any thoughts as to how to, I mean, I don't know how that coincides with the dark skies ordinance. Does that, if that applies? To works projects at night, but um, it's something I wanted to bring up.
Yeah, we'll look into it. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, Greg, I, I'm just curious if there's, that's been considered?
For the, the light pollution, yes, it's been considered on some jo- jobs. Um, so the light's not being shot, you know, the light is directed at the work area on the, onto the roadway and not onto the neighboring. Streets or the neighboring uh, homes. The, for the, for the sound um. Uh, there are, there is mitigation or not mitigation, but uh, we do look at relocation if necessary. And the, the problem with the sound uh, is, is not. I- is typically on the, like the bridge replacement project at Tranqus. Cause you're, if you're driving piles and everything, that's the one that really gets everyone with, with the noise exceeding the limits. So we, we have relocated folks um, for those, for those. So we just uh. We demoed a, a bridge in, in the valley here uh, last weekend and we did relocate a few uh, that, that weekend. So.
All right, well, whatever, whatever can be done to, you know, minimize lifetime impacts, I, I would, I would urge you to do. Uh, Chris?
Yeah, um, speaking of the mural, Greg, I actually spent some time with the people involved in this under the bridge about. It was about a year ago, Rob, something like that. And with the people uh, that own Boravage there, or what used to be Boravage. Because that's their walk through there. And um, also, this mural that they're gonna do is. The same as the mural that has been done under the bridge up at uh, Leo Correo. There's one up there. We, you know, I'm real familiar with that, cause I've walked under that bridge a number of times. Believe it or not. It's, it's got a few markings on it, but it's not tagged like you would expect it would be at all. Uh, it's pretty clean. It's pretty nice looking mural, well done and that's my two cents.
Scott?
Thank you. Um, you know, Wade, when you were talking about the mural, I, I, I just had a thought. I wonder if the arts commission could get together with the high school. And we could get some Malibu students to paint it and uh, you know, we save. A third of a million dollars or something. But uh, you know, that might be realized to get some people in the community. Get our kids involved with something like this.
But as a, I, I'd, I'd say reach out to Lottie and make the recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right. Mr. Farr, I think um, I think we, I think we're, we're done. Um. Brandy, are, are we ready to adjourn?
There are no additional agenda items, so yes.
Any last questions before? But like I said before, like before the meeting too, um. If there's any questions, what's, I, I'll be happy to kind of ask them. Uh, like I mentioned, Rob. And Troy and I, we all work really closely, especially lately, kind of collaborating, working on projects and kind of. We're on the same page on a lot of things too. And it's um, oh, there he is.
Somebody turned it off at the beginning. I didn't realize I was.
So um, so, so, yeah, so if, if there's things that come up in the future too, we'll, we'll, we'll be, we'll be, you know, we can also come back and. Give an update on kind of, on some of the stuff later on too and kind of making sure everyone is up to speed on what's kind of going on.
Yeah, we'll be happy to come back.
Yeah. Wade, if we're done, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, you don't need a motion, but Chris, I'd like to ask you a question.
Ask me a question?
You a question, because here we are, public works with public safety and we've got Rob. Um, do you know how many cars were towed over the summer season?
Scott, that's not on the agenda. We can't talk about that.
Oh, we can't?
Nope.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, just, just, just let me and, and Chris know or like that, we can get that information to you.
Sorry.
Okay.
All right, uh, going once. Any more questions? Pop your hands up if there are any questions left, because we're gonna adjourn here in a moment. Uh, not, not you, Rob. All right, um, I want to thank, uh, I want to thank Greg Farr and Caltrans. Thank you for the, for the very, very thorough presentation. Look forward to kind of seeing you come back as some of these things start to uh, take shape. In the meantime, um, looks like we're gonna give everybody plenty of time in the adjournment for the next meeting. So um, thank you all for attending. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Good job, Wade.
Thanks.